Okay. Okay, it's six thirty. I call this meeting of Manchester by the Sea. Select board to order. John?
Yes, here.
And yes, Kathy, yes, Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, here.
This meeting is being recorded. If anybody cares. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Here, well, actually.
Yes, you do.
Well, we had some citizens come up to us at the booth.
Uh huh.
Um, on the table at the Festival by the Sea and just a couple of comments. One was a question around the Pleasant Street and Pine Street intersection. Um, they love the paving and et cetera, but they were wondering why the crosswalks were located where they were. And was wondering if the job is complete or still in process. Because the residents said that the natural flow of the sidewalks is, uh, crosswalks is different than the children. Where they cross when they're coming from Walker Road onto Pleasant Street. It's like in an odd place, like they have to go down to it. Cross a couple of extra streets. It didn't seem natural to them, so they were curious as to why the placement was the way it was, and I had no idea, so. Um, so I just, it would, I think it would be good to understand if that's in process or not. And then, um, items not on the agenda, we can talk about it now, or action items that's coming up right after. We have on an, um, on the action item list, the review of White Street Beach Parking. Um, but that's not till September and residents have complained. Evidence of people camping out overnight.
Ah.
And so I didn't know if we wanted to, if there's anything we need to discuss sooner, or if parks in rag or the police but between amongst themselves, they can deal with that. On their own, but I, I don't think any of us really want. Um, camping going on overnight.
That's kind of always happened there.
Yeah, but I, it's, you know, I just think if we're gonna talk about it, by the time you talk about it in September, it's kind of too late. Um, so I just wanted to bring it up.
Because we put it on late.
Right.
Because we see what happened, because we thought we were going to have more patrol. Of parking attendants and they'd be able to get out there more often, but it looks as if they come on, go on a regular schedule, which is perhaps not ideal.
Yeah, they should show up late and leave early.
Well, we don't, we don't enforce parking, resident parking overnight. And seems like Singing Beach has a sign, no overnight parking, but White Beach does not have that. So I don't know if it's as simple as putting up a sign and.
Saying that apparently it's on some website where, uh, up and down, where you, we can park. You know, usually people who are parking overnight find a Walmart.
Uh huh.
Okay, because they allow that. But Chuck was saying that there was someone's, and I could be wrong, I think that's.
No, I think, I think I remember him saying that.
Somehow there's a website that drafts people that park there.
Yeah. So anyway, I just put on the radar because the pictures that I saw were of a, um, non-United States.
Yeah, it was a French, uh.
French plate. I don't even know how these people got here. So I just, I didn't, I didn't feel it was appropriate to wait until September, so I don't know how you wanna handle it, Tony.
Well, the chief is back tomorrow, uh, so I'll be connecting with him and Chuck will be back later this week, so. As far as like improved signage goes, I think the three of us could get together and figure out what a better approach might be with that. Um, for the public, I think if, if you, if you see something, call the police station and we'll send a cruiser down there, uh, to deal with it. Um, as far as added. Uh, enforcement or parking attendant, that's a, that's kind of a longer term discussion, uh, because obviously there, there'll be. Funding needed to support that. Yeah, yes.
Does, does particular issue look like something that was?
As long as we're talking about, uh, signage in West Beach, there, I've heard on a couple of different occasions that there should be a handicap parking.
Right. But yeah, but you would, yeah, you were with us.
He's been, he's been on my case.
Two of us were there, yeah.
Like this, I think that comes up in September as well.
Yeah.
Handicap parking.
A handicap sign, really right in front of the, uh, access to the beach. So the handicap, because otherwise people will park right in front of that walk, that access spot, and then it's hard if you've got a wheelchair or something to get out there.
It's gonna be hard anyway, because that's like soft and.
Yeah, I, I, I understand it's, otherwise, it's all, it's big rocks.
Run the tight up right now, but that was, we'll put that on per.
Then my last item, um, as I signed a cemetery deed this morning again. I thought back to a media, a previous select board meeting that we had where we talked about items that should come off of the plate of the select board. Because it should be delegated to the people who actually make the decisions. So I went through all my notes and I found that we had a list at the November twenty first, twenty twenty two. Meeting of items that were supposed to be investigated for perhaps, you know, things we don't need to talk about. Or sign anymore. So cemetery deeds was one. The tree hearing was the second, is that something that could be delegated to the tree warden or the town administrator? The dog hearings, that was the third. Um, the fourth item I took note of was national grid presentations. Um, and then the fifth item was committee interviews. It, would it be better for a couple of people from the select board to interview committee candidates and make recommendations to the broader board? Would that, would that be more effective or not? So anyway, no decisions on any of these, but I just, again, anytime we're kind of rubber stamping somebody else's decision, it's really not. Um, it's usually assigned something, it's not.
I think that on this, on the cemetery, we just have to sign the book, there's no, I think it's a land tran, is it a land transfer?
But in, in other towns, the select boards don't do that, so. The question is, is there another approach that we can take? Because somebody's making the decision on these plots and it's not us. Um, so anyway, just looking for a discussion on my position.
All agree with trees.
Yeah. So that was my list, thank you.
If we. Well, I think we need to discuss this in, when it's been noted.
Right, yeah, so this was just my list, I put on a action item list for our future meeting, but that, those were the items that I recalled, I couldn't remember if there was others.
Sounds good.
Yeah, ju- just add them to the action item list.
Yes.
Have you do it over there?
I signed them, so I, and I. I, I'd have to look back to see if the Town Administrator Act gave me that authority, or if it was just a select board vote to give me the authority at one point in time. I'm sure that could solve, um, this one too, but.
This wouldn't be a bylaw issue, would it?
I don't think so. I think, I think the select board probably has the, uh, default authority, because it's town on land. But I believe you would have the ability to, a simple vote to transfer me as the signatory on those, um, would probably work. Uh, if we do a retreat, um, later this month or, or early next month, where we talk about. Goals and things of that nature that we could kind of talk through some of those sites. Uh, uh, back to the Pleasant Street, I'll check with Chuck on that too, if it, if the job's done, I'm assuming that it's a, um. Traffic standard type sight lines element, and I'll, I'll talk with them.
Yeah, it could, because on the, on Pleasant Street, the sidewalk is only on one side, so the resident was saying, why, why wouldn't those students continue on that side? As they walk up Walker Road, but the crosswalk is on the opposite side.
So they have to go like.
So they gotta go back and forth, and so it's just a little.
Gives me the exercise.
Yeah.
Hopefully some of soccer's.
Along, uh, along the lines of comments at, uh, at the festival. I had two people speak about the walkway back here and markings for that. That it's not obvious enough. We gotta sign.
Energy, the sign is.
There's a sign, but people, of course, look at the sign and they see this big fence which has been slid back on a driveway that looks like an industrial access driveway and says, is this right? And I know, I think I had spoken with Chuck a number of months ago and I said, look, just paint a walk.
It's not welcoming.
It is not. And people aren't sure, and furthermore, you get to the end, and of course, now I'm gonna make a sharp left, I mean, a, a straight left. And if you look down there, of course, that road, that path jogs to the right. So you look at it and like it goes nowhere. It just goes to.
There's the, there's a, uh.
Ben, so you need.
Some private property there too.
Yeah, well, yeah, but there's been easements provided. Uh, and so we need an arrow at the, you know, they should paint something on, and I sent a note to Chuck, uh, last night. Just paint a sidewalk thing, so it looks like a sidewalk, and at the end, put an arrow and say. Turn left, you'll get there. It's only, what, twenty yards, fifteen yards, and then you're.
Eventually, I think, once.
Yeah, but it does feel like you're cutting through somebody's back, yeah.
Well, I agree, and, and I think the biggest thing is you just look that way and all you see is a, a wall or a, a screen, you don't see, oh, there's the exit.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So. Um, that's something that the, I think DBW can. Do that somehow.
Anything else? Okay. I, right. So that anyone who is, we both will put up a hand if you want to be heard. Okay, um. There is no chairman's report. Um, do we have anything else that we want to put on action items? Okay. Um. Don't see. We'll do set. But I'm maybe not. First item is. The interview will do set.
Well, Debbie generally gets in touch with the folks. Right?
Yeah, he said he would be on.
Maybe that was him earlier.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Gonna get in such trouble.
Well, um. We could, uh, skip him in case he shows up later in the meeting, um, if you want, we could do, we could take a vote on the other two, uh, folks for now.
Well, why don't we take a vote on, um. Matt, Matt Bergeron, Joseph Bagan, and the, in fact, the whole list under item two. Matt Bergeron, Joseph Bagan, Gordon Brewster, Andy Oldeman, Kathy, and, um, Jeff Bodmer Turner. Henry Ottinger as backup.
Okay, Kathy is probably nominating herself as.
I don't think I should nominate myself, so I would welcome, John, I would, yes.
Okay.
I think Anna suggested we do all in one motion.
All in one motion.
Oh, okay, all right, I will do that, okay. Then I move that the select board appoint Matt Bergeron and Joseph Bagan as at-large members on the facility planning committee for terms to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. And to appoint Gordon Brewster as planning board representative, Andy Oldeman as finance committee representative, Kathy Bellata as select board representative. And Jeff Bodmer Turner as conservation commission representative. With Henry Ottinger as the conservation commission backup member to the facility planning committee for terms to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Discussion? John?
Yes.
Anne says, yes, Kathy, yes, Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yes.
Okay. The next item is Woody Kelly. Um, and I think the explanation here is pretty clear. We talked to him some time ago, he started. He was the force behind having a conservation, uh, a, a, you know, community preservation committee. Um, he's back in town and there's now an open slot for him.
That's you.
Yeah, that's me. I move that the board appoint Woody Kelly as an at-large member of the community preservation committee for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says, yes.
John, yes.
Um, the next item is the financial management review from the DLS, and I think Kehley. Brought this up and.
Yes, so, so, uh, Department of Revenue, their Division of Local Services, um, their. Financial Management Bureau, uh, offers a number of free services to municipalities. Uh, Manchester by the Sea had a financial management review performed in two thousand and twelve. Uh, we spoke about it at the finance committee meeting a couple of weeks back. Um, the finance committee welcomed the idea of, uh, requesting an update to that, uh, to that review. And it requires a, a vote of the select board to make the request. Uh, this is, it's not an audit, uh, it does not come with requirements, it's just simply recommendations after taking a look at. Um, you know, a number of different departments or, uh, our bylaws or our process and making some recommendations for us to consider.
How long was the process?
Um, I'll. I'm guessing, I, I think it's a couple of months, I think it's like three or four months. And I think that they're, they're about, uh, I say that because when I spoke with, um. Someone over there, they said they were, uh, you know, three or four months behind, uh, if we put the request in it, likely wouldn't start until another three or four months from now.
All right. Um, the other, it's over ten years since the other one was done, that certainly predates all of us here, I don't know. What was the disposition? Is that something that comes down the pipe and then is put on the shelf? I mean, I, I looked through a number of the recommendations, I think, have been adopted. I'm not sure if that was the drive or otherwise, there was an, kind of an overlap with some of the operations. Uh, the findings in the operations, um, uh, audit that we had, but, um. Will these guys look at the two thousand and twelve report, I assume they will, and say, what have you guys done? There were like thirty, what, thirty, thirty-one findings. Uh, you know, it looked like some of that are done, others we wouldn't necessarily know. But, um, is that gonna be integrated into that?
I think so, yeah, I think we, we can ask for that, that they, um, include in the updated report things that we. Accomplished since the last report, or the recommendations that we.
They should, I mean, that should be their, almost their starting point, I think.
Yeah.
Can we, um. Uh, direct them to dive deeper into a particular area, or is it just kind of they're comparing us against other benchmarks?
No, I, I, I've never been part of the initial process, um, the startup element, you know. Uh, I guess describing what the scope of the work is going to be, but I think that we have that ability to ask them to take a closer look at certain elements.
So like, for example, one of the things I'm interested in, we've talked about for a couple of years, is the optional services that we provide. Um, we, or even some of the, some of the mandatory services are, what should be fee-based versus tax funded by taxation? Um. It's one way to. Keep our taxes under control is making sure we're leveraging fee-based options wherever we can, and are we doing enough of that as an example?
Yeah.
Or are the fees we're charging for the mandatory services, are they? Um, in line with what other town is charging?
I don't think that would be part of.
Oh, well.
Yeah, that is certainly something that we need to look at, I don't know if that would be part of this process, um, but that may be. They may have, uh, an alternate, you know, another offer of service that could get a little bit closer into our fee structure and. How it compares to similar communities. Uh, we talked about that at the finance committee meeting as well, um, taking a closer look at that, especially, you know, and. We did that just recently in the hot with, uh, inspectional service fees, that was a big one that, uh, just tends to get. Uh. Away from the market quickly, so it's, that's one that you, you try to look at pretty regularly.
Yeah, see where Jake is already looking at his fees. According to his, um.
I read in the report, I think Andrea was here for that, I think somewhere in the report it said, and the person has only been here for six months, something like that. So have you spoken with her about this at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so she's, uh, she knows what the find, or the recommendations were.
Yeah, she's, with her, uh, audit background, uh, she, she loves the idea of having them come in, you know, with. And it's not a real audit, it's just recommendation and it's a free service, so she's, she's on board with it.
It's free. That one's free.
What's coming out of your text?
Yeah. How long has the DLS been doing this? In other words, have they got a number of towns where they, all right, we're in the second, they're in the third?
Probably there's a three-month backlog.
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to look, look back, but on their website, you can look at all the reports that they've performed.
Then on the, uh, I did look at the web, uh, I went there, these seconds, and then my eyes collapsed over.
Yes.
But I guess maybe down at the end it was that, okay.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I was recommending that. Um. You can bring this up again as the date that they were coming gets closer, so. Can make recommendations as to what we want to hear, what we want to look at. So.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, I'm ready.
I moved the select board request services from the DLS Financial Management Resource Bureau for a financial management review.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Anne says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is the scoreboard for Brook Street Field. Um, and our requirement is that we accept a gift.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
When this, um, was brought to my attention, I first asked, you know, is this, isn't normal that this would be put in front of the select board for a vote? Uh, it is norm, it is part of, you know, when you're accepting a gift, that is financial, uh, municipal finance. Law that requires the select board to accept a gift, um, but it's also town property, and I believe that's part of your. Uh, tradition, I think, is to, uh, to vote on. Uh, accepting that and it being installed, it's still, I believe, has to go through the conservation commission process.
Uh huh.
Um, so your vote obviously is.
Is conditional.
Conditional, yep. There was, uh, you may know the history better than I, I believe there used to be a scoreboard there, and this is going as an available occasion.
And location.
Yes.
I don't know, there, I'm, that may still be good.
Further discussion?
Uh, I move that, uh, board accept the gift of a new scoreboard and approve the installation at the Brook Street Field conditioned upon conservation commission approval.
Okay.
Yeah. Further discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says, yes.
Yes.
John says, yes. Well, right, um, number six is the special event permit, which, um. You're not.
Yeah, I think the Rotary got ahead of themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have some more details to work out, um, but I do think they'll be coming back before us soon.
Good. Um. And finally, um, the, um, consent agenda?
Concerned with that, or I'll make a motion? No, all right, I move the select board approve the consent agenda items listed.
Second.
Discussion? Anne says, yes.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, um, we skipped over the liaison updates because I can't read, um. Jeff?
Did you put?
Yeah.
Um, well, the main potatoes of the planning board was they had a long discussion with Kathy McCabe on the downtown vision project.
Uh huh.
Um, they went over some of the stuff from that, uh. For that, uh, public forum, I think we're all there for that. Um, they went over some of the goals, um. Some of it was, uh, some zoning, possible zoning changes to allow mixed use by right downtown. Um, possibly active first floor use for property with street frontage. So it would be commercial and then residential above. Um, some talk about parking increased visibility, which John talked about with the path earlier. Um, and parking out back here behind Town Hall. Um, develop and distribute parking maps. Uh, they talked some about business recruitment, um, development. Of a business welcome page. Uh, support development of new pop-up businesses and new entrepreneurs. And, and these pop-up businesses, I thought that was kind of interesting, they had like, uh, she talked about, I think you were there, right, Tony? She talked about like a three hundred square foot space that people could have like a little pop-up business for like a week or a month or something like that. So I thought that was, I don't know how it would work, but.
It could cost them all the time, like Julian Edelman had one for like a few weeks or something.
Salem House, the, uh, the old city mall.
Yeah.
First floors in all countries.
Yeah.
I don't know where they put it.
Oh.
Yeah.
U M P store.
Yeah.
Well, that's up to Orlando.
That's true.
Yeah, but, but, but we could encourage the land, find some way to encourage landlords.
Like Jim Brown has already, they've mentioned this at some of the, um, chamber meetings we attended as well, so I think they're very open to it.
Yeah, uh, some, it seemed like an interesting idea anyway. Um, and, uh. Just some other improvements, uh, information-wise, uh, business maps. Um, a down, someone talked about downtown Harbor walking trail. Which I think would kind of go back into that when they talked about. Maskenoma Park, when they had that, yeah, that whole redesign, so I think that. I mean, whether that's, um. What do you feel about that, though? And, uh, and also trying to grow existing businesses, so that, that was pretty much about it.
Seems to be a little string outside their realm.
Well, I think, I think the next steps of trying to figure out who's gonna take what pieces of this and. You know, it's not gonna be all planning board thing.
It's the, the shift they're doing.
Right, it's doing.
The chamber, I think it's, uh, I think it's more of a dip in chamber, but, uh, you know, collaboration.
Yeah.
They did, I mean, early on, she did mention, said, somebody's got to spearhead all of the stuff in terms of programs and promotion and all of that. Who's gonna take ownership of that? It seems like it is D I P, but that really is kind of a big responsibility, that's kind of like almost a paid.
And they're working on their revised charter, they won't be meeting again and.
Yeah, that's correct.
But, um, at some point, you know, committees can only do so much, right? So at some point. It needs to be at least a round point of contact to ensure continuity regardless of how the committees.
I think with, um, the chamber, Manchester's always been like a stepchild of the KPM chain for a long time.
I think they've got that Gloucester and Stepchild.
Yeah, but now that they're, I mean, it's, it's gotten big with Ipswich, and I think that, having Jim Brown, actually president of things. Has brought Manchester to the forefront, I think the, uh, I mean, we had a, I think it was a very successful Festival by the Sea.
Hmm.
You know, the one local business had a record day. Okay, uh. I mean, you couldn't get that, you couldn't avoid it, the weather, if any, better than that. Uh, but I really think that's a, that's a D I P work in collaboration with the, uh, the chamber, that's their mandate.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I think.
Well, I see, uh, I mean, people pay to be members of the chamber for reasons.
All of them chambers mandate, yes.
I think hoping that the planning board will take it over is.
They take it up on the plate.
They've got a lot on their plate.
I think the, I think the effort there was the dip, uh, committee was presenting to the planning board. You know, some of the discussion that they've been having and the findings that they've received or that they've seen themselves and. The overlap with the planning board is the zoning element.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think the D I P knows to stay away from zoning.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think the D I P comes up with a plan and then comes to the planning board, can you tailor some zoning to allow this plan to develop? It's the way it goes.
Right.
The idea, uh, dip and with. You know, we had talked, I had talked to you earlier about some kind of, uh. Uh, cultural. Uh, fund that we could set up, that we could, uh. Uh, fund that we could set up, that we could, uh, for instance. Uh, I don't know how we'd fund it, that's beyond my, uh, purview. But if you wanna, uh, say there is an open, uh, a vacant storefront somewhere, uh, maybe there's a, a big, some, uh, store owner or landlord. Come to this cultural or whatever you wanna call it.
Cultural council.
But there's no funding there.
Well, what about CPA?
Okay, but that's something, you know, I'm saying something that's really quick, I wanna, you know, uh, if we can come up with five thousand dollars, can you match this five thousand dollars? So we can do a ten, you know, and have something going on, and I go back to what was the, uh, the porch fest in Magnolia, which is a big thing, I guess it's, uh, it started in. And Stumble, I guess, and, uh, I walked around, it was great, you know, but I don't know who paid for what. Uh, but maybe there's, you know, if we had. Some seed money available to get this up and going and every year, because people look forward now to. The Festival by the Sea, now that was all, that's got nothing to do with Manchester, but that's an event that people look forward to. Uh, you know, the, the carnival coming up. Wait until the convoy boat race, okay, these are events that people, you know, start to embrace.
Is a carnival happening?
Uh, the carnival, uh, okay, that'd be my liaison update.
I don't wanna cut into a liaison update.
Okay, well, um, you just, you just did, all right, I know the carnival thing scale back, the, the harvest fest is gonna be scaled back, the carnival will happen. Uh, the boost is found that it was, and it wasn't as profitable, the amount of, it wasn't a return on investment they were hoping for. Uh, so Ty is running with the harvest pot, he's gonna scale it all back, he's gonna, uh, invite vendors over. Uh, but it's gonna be a much, it's not gonna be what we, we, you know, the last two years. But the, the carnival itself was always the driving factor. And so the boosters will run the carnival part of it and then, uh, Ty will run it.
So they'll be coming to us to?
Yeah, I think, uh, my understanding is they already applied, I haven't talked to Cheryl, but I know that Emily McCavanagh had filled out the paperwork. So it might be this month at the, uh, with Pox and Rec to go through them first. Uh, and then Ty is looking for some guidances, what he wants to do, so I'm gonna set him up with Debbie at some point. As far as some permitting goes, uh, for liquor licenses, et cetera. What's interesting is that, uh. The, uh, this year, I mean, cause he, this year, there was no beer tent at the festival, this is the first time in.
Yeah.
Seven or eight years. Last year at the carnival, the, the beer vendor wasn't coming back, it wasn't profitable. So I don't know exactly what would tie something to do, but it seems to me that they don't work. And you and I had also chatted about that, being pinned into a little area that you can't wander around, it kind of is counterproductive.
Hmm.
As far as, uh, I mean, I didn't, you know, I, I was walking out of the French Quarter and they said, you couldn't drink your drink with you, I didn't leave for the French Quarter. Drink, I'm not leaving. So, uh.
But that's different if it's the French Quarter.
Yeah, the French, you bought whole walk around. I couldn't leave the French Quarter and walk into New Orleans properly. Uh, but so these are things that, you know, I'm gonna mention it to Ty when I see him, are you sure you wanna go this route? But, and he's, those looking towards, uh, Deb for some guidance as far as the permitting, licensing and insurance system.
There's gonna be an apple pie contest.
Ryan and I are there.
There won't be a dunk tank, I'll tell you that. They lost money on the dunk tank. Apparently I wasn't as big a target as they, wasn't as big a drawer as people wanted. So that also wraps up on the, uh, liaison.
Um, I had a nice meeting with the MBTA Advisory Committee Director and Associate Director last week. So, um, I went into the meeting, it was kind of a last minute meeting, just a week's notice. And I kind of thought we were, I was gonna collect feedback and, and bring that to the meeting, but then I thought, I just wanna find out how to engage with these people, right? And so, um, it's a really good meeting, um. So a couple of things, I did request ridership data, cause I think it would be helpful for us to have real data rather than anecdotal data about who uses. The stop here and, and how often, um, but then I found us discussing more regional transportation. Items, and this is where I do think we need to engage, so for example, um. There's a climate committee, right, we talk, when we plan, uh, talk about our climate challenges, we always talk about the fact that the station here is gonna be underwater at some point. Well, that's not something we can fix ourselves, right, we need to partner with other communities, there is a climate committee. And I do think, um, you know, Tony, we might wanna have somebody representing Manchester, because I, I, I told them, look, you can. You know, do whatever you want along the Rockport line, but as soon as that, that track goes underwater, you lose Gloucester, so, you know, we, we all need to work together. Um, the other thing we talked about was, um, the parking. So their website says that the town owns the parking, I was like, huh, I don't know about that. So they checked while we were at the meeting and MBTA owns the parking, but they weren't sure who was managing them. Who is managing the parking, and people can park there for free, doesn't cost it, but is anybody actually managing it? Seeing if those people are on the train or are they using it for beach parking, cause we do have a parking challenge, and if no one's managing those spaces, that's a lot of spaces. So that also might be something that, um, we should engage with them on. The other item was, um, we talked about regional transportation discussions they've been having with other communities. And one of the things they mentioned was, um, connecting the commuter rail to the Blue Line, which would be kind of the holy grail for the seacoast. Um, by putting in a commuter rail station in Wonderland, so. Apparently the Revere Mayor is really pushing for that, and he could use some support. So I talked to Tony, I'm like, you know, if you can get more ridership usage on the line, people go to the airport or to the aquarium, whatever. Um, you can alleviate some of that traffic, we all hit on one twenty-eight south, just trying to get through Beverly, you know? So there are a couple of regional items that if we may wanna partner with other communities, rather than thinking of that commuter rail station as just. Something that's there for singing beach, we could have an impact on transportation for our community by thinking outside of our community. So that was my main takeaway, I'm looking forward to getting some of the data from them, so we can really understand who's using, um, who's using the team. Uh, that was that.
So Wednesday, there's a municipal coordination call that I'm on with the MBTA.
Awesome.
I wrote down those four things, uh, I'm not really, I'm not sure, uh, what the. Top, what the topic of conversation or how the flow of that meeting's gonna go, but if I have an opportunity, I'll bring those up.
Yeah, I mean, really connecting to the Blue Line would be the holy grail for the seacoast, you, the tracks run in parallel, you know? And it's just, it's ridiculous, you can see Wonderland when you do, as you, as you ride on the train, and it would be such a big deal to, to connect those two.
Didn't go to Wonderland Ballroom.
Is that even there anymore? I don't think so, I'm in that area quite a bit, I haven't seen that in quite a long time.
Um, yeah, while I chatted with the seniors today, they did ask questions about where the condo docks stand, and I'm not sure, are you in the middle of that, or is?
I had a conversation with Jim Brown Saturday. Uh, and Jim is knowing his cousin as he does, and you're getting to know, okay. Is, uh, Jim is doing some red lines on his own, he's, uh. Modifying, getting everything together, and he's just gonna drop it and rest his lap. If we, if we call, the P and S got stalled as soon as, uh.
You got all of it.
Russ cut over it.
Yeah.
And it'll be right now, he's been promised, I'm, I saw him at Dewey's, uh, going into Dewey's, no, the Jazz Fest a couple of weeks ago, uh, I'll have that this week. That was what, two, three weeks ago, so I think that now that Jim Brown is taking the lead on this, and I will touch base with him in the next day or two to see where it's at.
What are they changing?
Fun?
Do we know what they're changing or fiddling with, I should say?
No, no, except that if it's Russ, he's gonna fiddle with everything.
Alright, so you weren't here for the last go around. I will wanna see that well in advance of this most discussion, but you know, our, our board discussing it, I'm a trustee for my condos, my second go around with condos. There's stuff that has to make sense, the documents have to align with how you wanna run the facility. So I will be looking for certain things, and if they're tinkering with that stuff.
No, I think it's just, I, you know, the big item was the, uh, voting.
That's, yeah, we'll talk, yeah.
We've already agreed to.
Change, well, we talked about in the P and S, cause if that, that's, that gets into a whole can of worms, and I've been down that road, so we should talk of, you know, with Tony, maybe.
Okay, alright, so, um, let's just say that it's in progress, we can't really say anything more than that at this point.
No, I did, I did tell, I think in an email, or at least with Todd Crane and Jim, that, you know, we wanna start a serious fundraising in September. So we have to have.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's not the power lines, you know, and we have to have something.
Uh, that, that has to be really finalized.
Yeah.
It really does part of, part of the story. So that's happening, um, the, uh, Dial-A-Ride with Keta starts tomorrow. So we'll see how that goes, they've got, they've got, I signed up, and I will take a ride within the next probably two weeks, a ride to nowhere, maybe I'll go to the Cheesecake Factory or something, I don't. But I will see how that, uh, how that goes. But, uh, they do have, uh, some promotional initiatives to try and get the word out, they certainly had flyers with the, with the seniors, they're on social media. They obviously have information on the Keta website, I think they have flyers here.
And we sent them a, uh, an address list for seniors as well, so they can.
They can do that, yeah, so you need, you need to register with them, so whenever you call, they say, I know who you are, I've got whatever the basic information is that they need. And, uh, uh, they can.
What's the age requirement?
Pardon me?
Senior?
No, they will take anybody, it's just that, who needs rides?
Cheesecake Factory.
I'm not going to the cheesecake. But I'll go someplace, just, just a ride and then get a ride.
You have a bum toe and you can't drive.
Hey, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Where do you wanna go in?
I think of the doctors, right?
Yeah, okay, I should, I should pick up there.
Well, just see, uh, see what the story is.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's going along, uh, the library, um, well, Jack Burke got around on Saturday. And he made some observations with the guy at the libraries, you probably know, with regard to, uh, the generator there, which, uh, was installed and hooked up. Not too far, not too much, you know, not too many months ago, but it was kind of an incomplete job, because there was some construction involved. Uh, that left construction debris and mounds of earth and other things like that. It was kind of by bushes, et cetera, but nevertheless, it should have been all cleaned up, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Chuck has been informed, it'll be taken care of, I think, within the next, uh, week or so. Um, that's a, that the, um, Historic District Commission, there's no report on that, and DPW is, that's one with trash.
Yeah. I missed a board health meeting, but it seemed as if there was anything particularly that they were going to talk about, they, it was. A specific set, subject system and reappointments, and I think reappointments were pretty clear. Um, I will try to get to their next meeting, because there hasn't been much, as much progress as hoped. On the, uh, two Desmond Avenue property, and this. A kind of desperate message from, from Michael's son saying, you know, I'm working at two in the morning and trying to move stuff out, but. I'm not getting here.
I, I spoke to Wendy just before the meeting tonight, and there was more email exchange today, uh, I, I'll, I'll definitely give them credit on communication.
Yes.
Um, as well as their attorneys communicating pretty regularly with ours, um, so. There is, there's more information being, um, passed back and forth.
Hmm.
Um, progress, uh, is.
It's construction.
It's base.
Yes, and I think, you know, to that point, I think they're trying, from what I can read, they're also trying to incorporate their expansion, so. There is, there is, you know, and I think that they are moving in that direction, we know they're not living in there. Uh, I think that, this is my opinion, but it's, you know, the report also, the decision on their own, is that status quo and, and let them keep trying along.
As long as they're, as long as they're moving forward.
Um, we have filed.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, and, um.
December, it was August eighth?
Yeah, um.
So there's communication going back and forth with our attorneys and their attorney about a joint petition to postpone.
Okay.
The receivership hearing that's scheduled for Friday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. And I believe the Board of Health will be making that official decision on Thursday at their meeting.
Right.
Um, but part of that is some. Other elements that, you know, they're looking for from Two Desmond Drive as well.
Hmm.
You know, trying to kind of work with, but also keep progress moving.
We have a signed contract for the roofing work yet?
Nope, and we haven't seen any, anything related to plumbing.
And nobody in town has been through that facility, the, through that house.
Correct, that's another element.
It's, uh, three issues that are.
Has been. Tend to strong.
I'd like to see one of those three before we let go of the meeting on Friday.
So I agree with you on that.
It's not our decision, but I'd like to see at least one of those three things done, otherwise we're, uh, just being so long.
Yeah. I think, I got the, you're not alone in that, I had, that's the impression I got. So Thursday morning, we'll see.
Okay. Um. The. School committee is meeting from August nineteenth, um, I think, um. And the Finance Committee is scheduled to meet, to meet again in October. So. Pretty light liaison work for me.
Uh, I'd like to attend that August nineteenth meeting, uh, with you, if that, if you can, I sent you an email today.
Yeah, I, I sent you something back, introducing you to the major players.
Great.
And, uh, I didn't introduce you to them so much as them to you.
Okay, great.
And, and, uh, yeah, um, I'll let you know that when I know for sure, that, that they ordinarily meet at six in the high school in what's. In my age would have been called the library.
Was it called that?
Medias, medias.
Medias?
No.
No?
Not always. That's up to, I don't care, I'm sorry you even asked.
Okay.
Didn't realize it was gonna be that long.
So, okay.
Tom, any show your report?
Yep.
Uh, so since, uh, well, today, uh, I attended the, um. Event with, at the American Legion with the Chelsea Mall, uh, with Senator Tar and Chief McNally and Lieutenant McCoy were there, it was the eightieth anniversary of this event.
Hmm.
Um, and it was a, it was a great time, they were very excited to be there, and Senator Tar presented them with a citation. Um, since, uh, we met last, of course, we've been dealing with Republic and the trash issue. Uh, again, this week, our DPW will be doing, uh, curbside collection recycling on Thursday for Monday's route and Friday for Tuesday's route. Um, I believe the added transfer station hours have been helpful, um, I did speak with someone at the Festival by the Sea about, uh. You know, maybe some improved signage and, um, guidance at the transfer station as to. I think the flow of traffic has been, was fine before we ran into this strike issue, and now all of a sudden you have a lot more residents attend, you know, going to the transfer station. And so the, the flow of traffic is backing up a little bit, so I'm gonna, again, I'll talk with Chuck. And probably we'll, we'll meet with, uh, Black Earth on that. Uh, we also had a meeting, a KRPC meeting, uh, that's a Regional Emergency Management Group, uh, in Rockport. Um, a couple of weeks ago, that was really good to meet all the different players and talk about, um, you know, our regional shelter operation and different. Action items that we're hoping to pursue, uh, as a group moving forward. Met with the friends of the Council on Aging with John, that was a great introduction, um, obviously a lot of things going on in that area. I attended a harbor management, uh, meeting, we also had a, uh, with Senator Tar, we had a meeting with Mastock and State Police and some of. And state police and some of the neighboring municipalities about wrong way driving on one twenty-eight. And started to kind of talk about what types of solutions, uh, could be presented that the legislature could help support. Uh, through funding and, uh, see if we can really correct some, a lot of the wrong way driving issues are. Uh, drunk drivers or seniors, uh, who, you know, it's not intentional, they just don't know, uh, which way they're going. And so trying to come up with better ways to prevent. Uh, you know, those, those accidents that are occurring. I had a tour of the water, uh, and sewer treatment plants with, with. It was, uh, ninety degrees. No, it was great, it was great, I love, I love seeing that stuff, and it really helps understand, you know, the, these major capital projects that we have and. Uh, meeting, that, meeting the staff, and they do a great job, I mean, that. So where, again, I keep going back to, uh, where I come from in the heart, we just, our water came from M W R A and our sewer, we just. Uh, sent to Lynn Water Sewer Treatment Plant, we didn't treat on the island, so to see the complexity of the system and. And Chuck is, I, I mean, he just knows, like, the technical details, uh, he, it's really impressive. Um, and we have a great team with Woodard and Karen and the folks over at, uh, the treatment plant, so. Um, it was good, I was glad to, glad to be able to do that, and then the Festival by the Sea, uh. Was a great day, as you mentioned, and I toured the library with Cynthia on, actually on Thursday prior to that. Communication, so I had already started talking about some of those issues and, uh, I'll follow up with Chuck when he gets back. And then the planning board meeting, so that, to that point, so the planning board meeting, they, and that zoning, uh, element. They did say that they may be considering a special town meeting in November to take that up. Um. They were gonna, in their meeting in September, they would confirm. Uh, we have, uh, on the town side, we have some things that we could add to that, uh, warrant, if we do have a meeting, but, um. Really trying to see what the planning board wants to do, and if they wanna move forward with the, with that, with the zoning change, we'll add some things on. If they don't feel ready, I think we could wait until annual town meeting in the spring. And I also met with the, uh, Affordable Housing Trust as well, uh, to, because we're gonna be speaking with, uh, Senator Tar and Secretary Augustus about. Um, the Powder House, uh, project and things that happened there and, and some of the other, you know, housing elements that. Uh, the, the big topic there is our housing authority, not just ours, but many towns are just under. Uh, funded and don't have the resources to maintain, you know, the properties they have, and, um, while we're supportive of expanding housing, we also have to make sure that we. Support the one, the, the housing that we do have too, so, uh, we'll be talking with Senator Tar and Secretary Augustus about that. And that's my update. I don't know if, is Will? Will, are you on the phone? If, if not, um, if, if one of you want to, if, if, if I could schedule a time to meet with Will, we could. Do that between now and the next meeting and. Recommend. You know, or, or.
I think that sounds like a good idea, perhaps you and Kathy would talk to him and then, um. Although he's not appointed, he should be involved, and we will appoint him when we have a chance to talk.
Good idea, all right. Good, yeah, other, is there a time that the, this group is?
Not been invited.
Nothing's been.
Yeah.
We were waiting till.
They were waiting till.
They were waiting for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're ninety-five percent of the board now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You should just go ahead.
So that may be happening in the next two weeks.
So. There's nobody who's obviously in charge of it, it's probably Chuck.
Right.
So when Chuck gets back, he should rally the troops and.
Yeah.
Get, get that started.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.